It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, regular meeting on March the 18th, 2024, to order and thank the ones that came out tonight to see your local government make decisions that affect all the taxpayers and all the citizens of Stanley County. At this time, I would like to recognize Scott Effer, Commissioner, to give us invocation and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Effer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If y'all would please bow. Our grace heavenly Father, we humbly come to you today once again thanking you for the many blessings, and Lord, we pray for strength and wisdom for this board as decisions we make for the residents of Stanley County. Lord, we pray for those who are sick and are hurting in our communities. We pray, Lord, just wrap your loving arms around them and be with them, keep them safe. Lord, we also pray for our police, our fire, our EMS, who protect and serve us daily. And Lord, we pray for our military and their families, for the sacrifices they make, Lord. These things we ask in your precious name that we pray. Amen. If you would, stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Effer. At this time, I would ask for adjustments or approval to the agenda. Do I have any?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we change Item 2 and change it to add the NC DOT resolution for Lighthouse Road. I think something came up with the school board that they've changed their mind about presenting.
Okay, we have a motion to remove--
Second.
--school board and add the DOT resolution in a second. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. At this time, we'll open it up for public comments, and the first person that signed up is Dale Moorhead. Mr. Moorhead has a flag presentation, I believe.
Excuse me. Are things still broken?
No. None of them worked out.
Yeah.
Good evening. It may not be the kind of flag presentation you might be expecting. I only have three minutes, so I'll get right down to it. My wife and I went to a ballgame last Tuesday evening at one of the Stanley County high school baseball fields. And I sat there and I looked at the flag on the far end of the field. It was an evening just like this. The wind was blowing good, and the flag was standing right straight out. And after about, midway through the third inning, I got up and left my bleacher seat, walked around the left-hand field and down to center field where the flagpole was standing behind center field fence. And I looked at the flag hanging on the pole, and I thought, the veterans that I had seen in the bleachers, you know, they wear the veteran's hat to say Korean Veteran or Vietnam Veteran, just plain veteran. And I thought to myself, they deserve better than this. So I took the flag down, and I folded it the best I could. It's a four-by-six flag, and to try to keep it off the ground, I couldn't do a very good job of folding it. But I'd like to show you that flag, and I think you agree with me that it needed to come down. If I could get somebody to help me hold one end of the flag?
Dale, would you tell us again where the-- which ballpark this was at?
Well, I wasn't going to tell you where. I'm not hunting any heads.
We just need new flags.
You got a new flag. They deserve better than this.
Was this at a municipality ballpark or a school ballpark? Which--
It's a school ballpark, high school.
Local high school, okay.
We'll try.
Yeah, we'll try. I'm not sure.
Let's get this way. It was a-- when we were in high school build, it was our number-one rival.
Okay.
I know who you're talking about.
Okay. And it's not the first flag this--
Do you mind if I take it? I got a flag disposal thing at City Locusts.
I'm gonna hang on to it. I will dispose of it properly when the time comes. I know you might be thinking, what am I doing here? Why am I not going to the school board? In the military, you chain of command, you start at the bottom and work your way up. And here, I'm starting at the top and working my way down. You as commissioners budget money to the school board every year, and I'm sure that there's enough money to buy a flag. And it wouldn't take that much for somebody within the school system to appoint somebody at every school to keep up with the shape of the flags that are flying, whether it's one flag or two or three. Wouldn't cost them anymore because the employees already there. All they have to do is walk around and take a look. Veterans deserve more. Memorial Day's coming up in a couple of months. And, you know, the schools are not the only place where you see this. I had a flag taken down in the graveyard on the east side of town the day before Veterans Day. I had to pull a couple strings to get it down, and the flag was stuck. The rope had gotten outside the pulley, and you could not pull it down. But they got a tree service from town to go in there and take it down. And then at the McDonald's on the east side of town, just maybe two months ago, that flag was torn to pieces. I went inside and asked the manager if they could change it, and she said she'd take care of it. A week later, it was still hanging there. And one of my daughters put it on Facebook, and another veteran somewhere in the county went and took it down. You know, maybe it's not legal to take a flag down, but do sit in the flag. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dale, and thank you for taking that flag down.
You're welcome.
Charlene Lee, I think you're going to be talking about stray dogs.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I have sent an email a couple of weeks ago, but this is something that is important-- oh, sorry, okay-- is important and concerning to me. I'm new to Stanley County, new to the area that I live in, and I do have three fur babies that I love very much. They add a lot of joy to my life. And having lived where I'm living right now since July of 2022, specifically last year, I don't know if it was just that kind of year or what, but I had at least close to a dozen dogs, different dogs, on my property. Some of them multiple times, day and night, night multiple times, chasing at times my cats, terrorizing my cats. I have had two dogs, one in December, one in January, that showed aggression towards me, approaching me, growling and barking. And one of those was a nighttime encounter, which was, you know, a little frightening. As you can imagine, having a dog coming out of the woods towards you, barking and showing aggression and just trying to get back to my home safely. I, in the beginning, started trying to locate the owners of these dogs, and I did find two owners who owned four of the dogs. There are about three sets of dogs that travel together in pairs, and so I spoke with the owners, but their dogs continued to show up on my property. I've spoken with the Sheriff's Department a number of times, and the only solution that they have given me is that I can shoot dogs that come onto my property. And that's a no-win, as you can imagine, a no-win situation for all parties involved. It's a no-win for me. I don't want to shoot someone's pet dog, and I believe that every single one of these dogs belong to a person or a family. It's a no-win situation for the dog, and it's a no-win situation for the owner of the dogs. And I understood from the Sheriff's Department that there are no ordinances in place to require residents to keep dogs on their property, which seems to be the simple solution and the win-win for everyone. The dog is safe, the owner gets to keep their dog. I don't have to shoot a dog. I'm safe, my cats are safe. And so my request is simply to ask that ordinances be put in place, not only within city limits, but outside the city limits. Dogs attack in the country as well as within city limits, so I'd like to see ordinances in place that protect every resident and their pets in Stanley County. I did, and I don't want to speak for them, they can come and speak to you, but I, in knocking on doors, encountered a couple of neighbors. One with two dogs that had been repeatedly harassed by stray dogs, and one neighbor who's-- who has two dogs, and one of their dogs was attacked and bitten by two stray dogs that were on their property. They have an electronic fence, so their dogs couldn't leave the property, but of course, dogs could get onto their property. And so I know that there are other residents within the quarter-mile, mile area that I knocked on doors. I know that there are other residents that have concerns and frustrations and that are to the point that they're ready to start shooting dogs. And I really don't believe anybody wants to do that. So I would, again, just simply like to request that ordinances be put in place to protect dogs, to protect, you know, the owners of those dogs, to protect myself, and to protect people, people's pets. That's my request to you. Thank you. God bless you for your service.
Missus Lee, do you live in the city limits of a township? Where do you live?
Yeah, I live just, looking at a map at least, I live just outside the city limits of New London. Yeah, it's literally, I think, maybe a couple hundred, couple hundred feet, maybe several hundred feet, but I live right outside the city limits.
If I'm not mistaken, back in 2013, I think it was, we redid our ordinances and made it pretty tough to where, when you're in the country, you bet dog should not come off the property.
We have an animal control ordinance that's got teeth. I've had, I believe, I've shared, your information has come to me via email, and I've shared your information with the sheriff on a couple of occasions. It's my understanding that some of our deputies haven't been issuing civil citations. I'm not sure why. I asked the sheriff why, because he said that he didn't have the authority, and I said I'd still believe our ordinance, as Jenny can correct me if I'm wrong. We still have the ability to do civil citations. Now, those fines and fees go to the school system, pass through, but still, there's the ability to do it. For whatever reason, they haven't been doing it, and so I've questioned the sheriff's offices too. Why are we not, you know, issuing civil citations for, when we have proof that somebody's animal's been off their property? I mean, we have pictures, we have other things to demonstrate it, so--
I'm sorry.
I really just need to continue to have dialogue with sheriff's office and figure out what's, why the ordinance that we have is not being enforced to the greatest extent that it could.
I do have pictures.
Again, I, there's some, I only have so much control over that, so.
And I think, Debbie, we went through that, it was pretty, very extensive process, and it was like, it was kicked back like three or four times. And I think it's something about an acre or something, yeah, because if, I know some people think they live in the country, they have 50 acres, their dogs can roam, but the problem is, if their house is 100 yards from the road, that dog has to stay out of the road. Because we had cyclists, there were cyclists were getting attacked, we had walkers getting attacked, we had a few things where people had to get rabies shots because they were out in the country. So we have a pretty strict one, and thank you, so, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda is Amanda Kirby, Stanley Soil and Water District. Amanda? Oh, you're right. Sorry. We'll call you in just a minute. We've got a presentation by our county manager about Lighthouse Road in Oakboro, which we put as the number-two item, and I apologize.
Oh, you're good. I just want to make sure we got to that item. It was a request from the North Carolina Department of Transportation through Mark Morgan to turn over a portion of the Lighthouse Road. Currently, Charlotte Pipe actually has a guard shack on that road, and so the Department of Transportation is actually asking for a few hundred feet of that road to be basically turned over for the, and maintenance by Charlotte Pipe versus the DOT. And so that's their, the DOT's request from the county commissioners. They said they needed a resolution in order to do that, and so that's what you have before you this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions or comments for County Manager Lucas?
Do you have, I became aware of this around December. Somebody mentioned it to me. If I'm not mistaken, they built a fence around that road and blocked it off?
There's a, there's a fence and a guard shack in the middle. We gotta go across--
In the middle of the road? So how did they get permission to do that? Because they just fenced it in?
DOT must have allowed them. I mean, they're, I think that's probably speaking to this while they're asking for this resolution so that they can take the appropriate action from a legal perspective to actually do, give the road, to that portion of the road to Charlotte Pipe for their maintenance. So, but yeah, there is a, there's a fence. I mean, to get into their, from that side of their entrance, you have to go through a fence, and there's a little guard shack there.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Yes, sir. Commissioner Barby.
Mr. Lucas, I live in that area, and I've used Lighthouse Roads many times over the years. That Lighthouse Road's at least 100 years old, and the public have used that road for years and years. And it was not brought to the public's attention when this section of road was given to Charlotte Pipe. And what really bothers me is taxpayers' money for all these years have paid for the maintenance on that road. And just before the pipe factory was built, the road was, the compaction of the road was built up for large trucks, it was widened, and new pavement at taxpayers' expense. And then it was given to the pipe factory. And I think as the people in the area became aware they couldn't drive through there any longer, it brought some attention back to the DOT. And as you well know, the rest of us, if the DOT wants to do something, they're going to do it. I mean, same way with the four-way stops and the traffic circles and everything else. But I think it's a way for them to possibly get out of some of the heat by us presenting this to them as, as a way of giving the Lighthouse Road away. I had a friend, and many years ago, lived out off Pope Ford Road. He had a dirt road that went through his property, more or less a logging road, he came out on river road. People got to using it for parking and stuff, and so he took his tractor out there and blocked the road. And was immediately told by the DOT that he couldn't block the road that connected two major roads, two public roads. So he was made, and this was not even a public road, so he was made to clear it out where it could be used again. He ended up putting a fence across it. He was allowed to do that, but, so I guess it depends on who you are, as to what kind of roads you get and stuff you can block. But I think this is unfair to the residents of county to lose. I mean, there's not a lot of traffic on that road anyway, but I can't in good justice vote to give a road away that the public has taken care of for so many years.
Any other comments?
Why is this an issue for us anyway? I mean, this is a DOT thing, and when we want some input on it, they tell us we don't have any input, and so I can't understand the do's and don'ts here.
I think it's a matter of, it's very similar, I would think, to when they ask for a roundabout or a four-way stop sign or something else. They're, they're seeking a resolution from the county so that they know the county is supportive of it. And so I don't, I don't, you know, whether or not you pass it, I mean, that's completely your call. The DOT has asked me to put it on your board, on your agenda for action and consideration. I've done so. And so, you know, it's not our, it's not the county's road, it's DOT's road. My feeling is that they're wanting your support, a show of support for them to, you know, move forward with disposing of that road in a legal fashion. That's, that's, that's the sense I get. You know, because the fence, the fence is there, and the guardhouse is there. I mean, it's across the road now.
They can move forward without our approval?
They've moved forward without our approval on other road situations. I mean, so, you know, obviously, having the resolution is, you know, helps DOT and helps Mark, and I'm sure, you know, they would appreciate the show of support from the county, but, I mean, that's your, that, this is completely your, your call. It's not, you know, I don't, I haven't talked to Charlotte Pipe, because Charlotte Pipe has been using, has had it blocked off for, since they opened up, I mean, even prior to them opening. So I haven't spoken with them about this issue, because obviously, they are, it's already occurring. It's already happened, so.
This is my opinion that the DOT, I don't want to say this, did not have the support, did not ask for the support of the commissioners on the stop signs out at 73. There were some roundabouts or some discussion here several months back, and they wanted our support, but my opinion is they're starting to ask for our support because we've got citizens that complain because they didn't know anything about changes. But it's my opinion, that's why they're asking it. It's also my opinion to state that I sure am glad Charlotte Pipe is here, and I sure am thankful that they spent $450 million in Oakboro, Stanley County, North Carolina. And I've been on Lighthouse Road riding to see the development of Charlotte Pipe. So it's up to the board whether or not we make a motion to support the resolution of abandoning the portion of Lighthouse Road adjacent to the Charlotte Pipe property. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to abandon Lighthouse Road.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Effer seconded the motion. Any further discussion about it?
I'd like to say one thing. They may be seeking our approval now, but they also seeked our approval for other things in the past, which they end up changing their mind on and doing like they wish to do. So it's nothing against Charlotte Pipe. I like Charlotte Pipe, but my issue is with the DOT or any government agency being able to take property that belongs to the public and doing what they want to with it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just want to, like I said, once again, in defense of the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization, I sit in on those meetings, and they do take impact from different municipalities, and sometimes they alter course. I mean, it doesn't mean they have to all the time, but they do. And I'm with Mike on this one, and for my reasons are, they put a fence out there and blocked the road, and we have local citizens that have driven down that road for years. I don't know how far they have to go out of the way now, but I've been, I think there's two people had, different people have brought this to my attention. And I appreciate them being here, but you don't, to me, just don't fence up a road without getting the proper permits and everything.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Andy, what part of that Lighthouse Road in town of Oakboro?
I believe the upper part of it is in Oakboro, yes. No, but I don't believe--
The part, the upper part where there's two or three houses, I don't think, that's, that's not blocked off. That's not the area they're, they're basically going to try to, my sense is it's very close to where the fence lines are, at the upper, upper end and lower end is where, that's, that's the area they would abandon and turn over to Charlotte Pipe for, yeah.
Any other comments? Well, let's vote. Let's see. All in favor of the resolution abandoning a portion of the Lighthouse Road adjacent to the Charlotte Pipe property in Oakboro? Please raise your right hand. All in favor? Three. All opposed? Please raise your right hand. Four. The resolution failed to be approved. Four against, three, four. Now, Amanda, your turn. Sorry about the last time.
I'd like you to next.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Kirby from Soil and Water, and I have two recommendations from the Ag Board for Voluntary Agricultural District. Do you want me to say them separately for a vote, or will you vote on both of them at the same time?
I would recommend you do it separately.
Okay. The first one is for Ava and Jason McLean off of Mission Church Road. They are outside of the city, the town of Locust. They are a cow-calf operation, and they have 25 acres that they are looking to enroll in the voluntary ag district.
We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add Ava and Jason McLean, 25.07 acres, into the voluntary agricultural district.
Okay. Commissioner Effer made the motion. Vice Chairman Barby seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Okay.
Continue.
And the second one is for Barry and Kami Whitley. They have a combined total of 125 acres. They are, it's two tracks next to each other, just split up. So they are looking to enroll all 125 acres into the voluntary agricultural district. They are in New London, outside of the city limits.
Any questions of Amanda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Barry and Kami Whitley to the voluntary ag district.
Okay.
25 acres.
Okay. Have a, Commissioner King, motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Trent, Commissioner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh.
Thank you.
Next up is Kyle Griffin, our 911 director.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. First, I'd like to say that we're very excited about the progress towards the new 911 center. And second, I would like to seek your permission to seek grant funding from the North Carolina 911 Board to assist in the cost of the new center. As you're aware, we were successful in securing a grant from the 911 Board for the CAD replacement project. This has helped tremendously offset the cost to the county. We would like to apply for a second grant that would help, if awarded, help offset the cost of the new center. For our current grant, we worked with Mission Critical Partners. To complete the grant application, we would like to do the same for this grant. If approved, to move forward. The Mission, Mission Critical has a longstanding success in North Carolina for securing grants from the 911 Board. So tonight, I would like to ask for your consideration in approving staff to move forward with the grant application and to approve the budget amendment that's in the packet, which appropriates $15,000 of excess revenue from the radio shop program and moves $8,000 from another expense line in the communications budget to cover the cost of the grant application and grant support. And second, to authorize staff to execute a contract with Mission Critical Partners based on the provided scope of work. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Kyle? He's getting off easy.
Kyle, was this, was this a matching grant? Would it be a matching grant or just?
No.
Okay. And there's no set amount, we just have to wait and see what gets approved?
Yes, so, um, we submitted for a certain amount. We worked with Mission Critical to look at the building design and grants with the nine-one-one board are extremely complex. Um, to see what they will pay for out of surcharge money. So what, anything on a grant is ineligible to be paid out of that fund to start with. So basically, if it's a nine-one-one center console, the surcharge balance will pay for that, or we can ask for more money for them. So this would be other expenses that they typically wouldn't cover.
Al, do you need, um, two motions or one?
One.
One, okay. Whole thing, okay. Yes, yes.
Uh, what's the turnaround time, um, for this grant that you want to apply for?
So we will apply, applications are due, I believe, early May. Um, and then they are awarded typically, I want to say, August timeframe. Um, so then we'll have that, that money to secure, um, we'll have to execute an agreement, uh, with the nine-one-one board. And then, um, there's some stipulations on how we use the money and report it. But we're familiar with that from the, the CAD project.
Any other questions? We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, appropriate the fifteen thousand in excess revenue from the radio shop toward the project and move eight thousand from another expense in the communication budget to cover the cost of the grant application support and authorize staff to execute a contract with Mission Critical Partners based on the attached scope of work.
We have a motion, Commissioner King, do we have a second? Okay, Commissioner Crump, second. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven oh.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Kyle. Next item, we have Bailey Klein, uh, planning and zoning, ZA twenty-four dash oh-two.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, give me one second, I'm gonna get this slideshow pulled up. Okay. Alrighty, thank you all for having me tonight. The item that I have before you is ZA twenty-four dash zero-two. This is a text amendment to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to update access requirements to properties to reflect the NC fire code requirement. And it also is to clarify how grievances are appealed in the subdivision ordinances. Before going through all the text amendments, I thought it was important that, um, to just go over what the goal of the text amendment is in general. So the goal of this text amendment is to make all access requirements in the zoning and subdivision ordinances consistent with what is required in the NC fire code to avoid potential future developmental issues and also remove language pertaining to whom major subdivision appeals are taken to. Um, I'm gonna start with the subdivision ordinance changes as far as the access goes. And then I'm gonna move on to what it applies to in the zoning ordinance, and then I'll go over the grievances. So, um, myself and Bob and the Fire Marshal and also Michelle Nance, she's here tonight, um, with Central Carolina. We all worked together to make sure that these updates were done properly and that all of the high points were, were hit and all the numbers were changed, which is the most important thing. We did research, especially Michelle, adjoining counties and towns that have updated requirements as far as, you know, consistency with fire code. Um, and pretty much across the board, it's a pretty general thing to make sure the access requirements are consistent with, um, fire code. And essentially, you know, it really comes down to emergency vehicles being able to access properties. Because, you know, in the county, you do have access, you know, pig paths is what they tend to call them, that are smaller and it's hard for emergency vehicles to get access to properties that are far off the road. And we also did have previous issues when it came to, um, access requirements. I'm not gonna just read the whole thing. I'm gonna go over the highlighted sections because that's really the meat and potatoes of it all and I don't want to bore you to death. But I thought it was just more important for me to go over the slideshow than to just read the memo to you. Because this is really where the changes are gonna happen. So the top section that you see that's highlighted, under subdivision defined. And also before I mention this, or go start in this, uh, the top of the slideshow, it says page one of handout. So the handout you were all given, it'll go page by page, so you can follow along if you would like to. That top, letter H, um, this is an exempt subdivision that we have in our subdivision ordinance. It was important to just go ahead and change that one from twenty to thirty feet, just to be consistent with everything else as far as easements are required. So this is the conveyance of a parcel of land, ten acres or less to a child, um, of a grand tour that doesn't abut a public right of way. So that was a, essentially that was twenty, but we changed it to thirty just to be consistent with everything else. And then below that, where the strike throughs are, that's for flag lots. The reason that we struck through the flag lot section for, because we distinguish them between residential flag lots and non-residential flag lots, those are stricken through because essentially now all flag lots are gonna have to meet the minimum road frontage requirement of thirty-five feet. And that's at a later page in the handout that that's actually written out. But it's marked out right here, um, because they'll all have to be consistent across the board. They won't have separate block, or road frontage requirements. So then at the very bottom, section sixty-six dash thirty-eight, this is where we get into the actual width. So this says subdivision streets giving access to one or two lots and having no collector characteristics, which collector characteristics essentially means that no additional access is given to outside lots, no streets are coming off of that easement. For other lots within or adjacent to the proposed subdivision may be designated on the plat as a private drive with a minimum of twenty-foot easement and a width of twelve-foot travelway developed for ingress and egress. So essentially what that is saying, that if an easement's created for one lot or if it's created for two lots, that doesn't, fire code hasn't kicked in yet. So they're able to have that twenty-foot easement width with a twelve-foot travelway, which is where the actual motor vehicle will go on that twelve-foot travelway. The easement width is twenty feet because, you know, culverts run off or, um, ditches, that type of thing. So that twelve-foot travelway is where the actual motor vehicle will go. I know you've all seen this example, but I thought it was important to just be consistent and to go over the same, same things. And so this is an existing two lots on what I'm gonna call LA Street. I don't know if it's LA or LA, but we're gonna go with LA. This easement is actually twenty feet wide, um, existing as it is. I think it's about a fifteen-hundred foot long. So these two lots would still be able, as they are, to stay at twenty-foot wide easement with a twelve-foot travelway. Fire code hasn't kicked in, so these two lots are fine. It's whenever they go to add lots, and I have another example that I'll get to with that. So this is just an example, two lots, twenty-foot wide easement and twelve-foot travelway is what would be allowed. Okay, and like I said, I'm not gonna read all this, I promise. So the top section, subdivision streets giving access to three to four lots. So this is when fire code kicks in, when that three lot threshold comes in, is when fire code starts, when their rules start to apply. So whenever a lot is divided, or three lots are divided out, that means that it's a thirty-foot easement width with a twenty-foot travelway. So that would change what that requirement is. So if somebody has an existing easement with just two lots on it and they want to add a third lot, that existing easement would potentially have to be upgraded to meet that thirty-foot wide standard with the twenty-foot travelway. Based on that last sentence that says redivisions of lots served by existing access roads, streets, or easements shall require upgrade on the road to the highest applicable standard. So that, once that third lot's added, they'll have to upgrade that, um, existing easement. Under B, the minor subdivision with three or more lots, um, shall be approved by the Stanley County Fire Marshal. The Fire Marshal asked that this be put in, um, obviously, especially with it now, potentially having to meet fire code, it's important that he reviews those minor subdivisions. Doesn't necessarily have to sign off on them, but he wants to put his eyes on them and see that, you know, the easement width is being met, the, um, turnarounds are being met, and all the necessary, um, standards. Um, and then down in sixty-six dash seventy-six, this is access and thoroughfare. This is where we start to talk about, um, two entrances into a subdivision, a major subdivision. So this says a divided entrance and/or, or a divided entrance and/or second entrance will be required for a major subdivision or development when a traffic impact analysis, the Fire Marshal, planning staff, or planning board determines that it's necessary. A subdivision containing sixty or more lots shall be required to have at least two entrances. So a traffic impact analysis for us is done when there's five hundred trips per day produced by a subdivision. DOT has, um, a form, a checklist that they go by to see if a subdivision would require, um, a traffic impact analysis. Their threshold's higher than ours, but ours is five hundred trips per day. And we require developers to also go by that checklist for us. So we use the same one as DOT, um, but we just apply it to, to our five hundred trips per day standard. This is the only, um, change that the planning board made. They, it was a subdivision containing, um, oh, I'm sorry, I marched through the wrong one. It was a subdivision containing sixty or more lots, but they asked that that be changed to fifty or more lots. So that strike through should be on the sixty, not the fifty, but, um, yeah, yeah, sorry about that. That was my fault. So that strike through should be on the sixty, not the fifty. So that, regardless if, um, traffic impact analysis, the Fire Marshal, whatever, whomever decides that a second entrance is needed, if that subdivision has fifty lots, it has to have a second entrance per this language. Letter G, um, no homes in a major subdivision can be located on an access easement unless it forms a court or a loop with two entrances onto a public road system. Any quarter or loop shall meet all easement requirements as specified in sixty-six eighty-three, except the court or loop may serve up to twelve residential lots. That section sixty-six eighty-three is coming up, but essentially it talks about having a, um, a, a turnaround that's met by the Fire Marshal standards. It'll have to be that thirty-foot wide easement with a twenty-foot travelway, so that will apply. And I have an example on the next slide that I'll show you of this. And then that letter D, major subdivision served by public utility water shall have operational hydrants in place and approved by the Fire Marshal prior to the issuance of building permits. He also asked that that be included. And if this is approved, then we'll work with Central Permitting to make sure that that is taken care of. So this is a subdivision, um, of ten lots off of Bratton Road, um, which is off of Vettel Church Road. This was approved back in, I believe, twenty twenty. And as you can see, I tried to circle, if you can tell, um, the red circles are where the loops are. So those are the two entrances. So this is what a loop would look like essentially. You're going onto a public road, but you have two entrances. So you basically go in one lane and out the other. So this is an example, I just wanted you to be able to actually visualize what that loop would look like, or court style. So this is section sixty-six eighty-three. This essentially was what we previously required. This is where the layout was of what we previously required for access easements, which was, um, we used to require that if it was over, or we still do, sorry, require that if it's over five hundred foot long, it's gotta be at least thirty-foot wide easement. But if it's under five hundred foot long, it can be a twenty-foot wide easement, is what is currently in place now. If this is adopted, that would obviously, um, go away in some respects. And so the, if four lots are being served by that access easement, this is essentially saying that it has to be at least thirty-foot wide minimum easement. Um, it doesn't apply to access easements that are outlined in sixty-six thirty-eight, which is that one to two lots. So one to two lots, that thirty-foot wide easement wouldn't apply, it would be that twenty-foot wide easement. Letter C, um, like I said, the minimum, uh, travelway is twenty feet with a, an unobstructed vertical clearance of thirteen and a half feet, which is able to support the load of fire apparatus and surface to provide all-weather driving capabilities and at a minimum be designed to the specifications that are outlined for minimum all-weather path standards. And I have those examples also to show you all. Um, and that came out of fire code as far as the vertical clearance, um, and then also the all-weather standards. So if the easement is in excess of a hundred and fifty feet and is at a dead end, which about ninety-nine percent of easements in this county are at a dead end, they don't continue on, um, to another, uh, secondary road. An approved, an approved fire apparatus turnaround shall be installed. So the options for that are shown in this figure that I'm about to show you. Cul-de-sacs are also allowed as a turnaround with the ninety-six foot diameter. This section doesn't apply to the one-to-two lot requirement, or one-to-two lot easements. And then if you go down to letter H, this is what I was talking about in the beginning with the flag lots. So flag lots shall be consistent with the minimum road frontage in section four oh-two of the zoning ordinance, which is that thirty-five foot road frontage. So that's where that is listed out. Unless written approval is provided by the Stanley County Fire Marshal. So unless, you know, an existing flag lot has a twenty-five foot wide road frontage, the Fire Marshal can sign off on that as adequate, um, and able to sustain. Otherwise, it would have to meet that thirty-five foot standard. So this is the same, um, two lots, I just added a third lot in there, so this is just hypothetical. So that existing twenty-foot wide easement, um, would have to be upgraded potentially to a thirty-foot wide easement with a twenty-foot all-weather surface travelway, also with an approved turnaround. So this is when fire code would kick in. So when that third lot is added, that easement would have to be upgraded and a turnaround would have to be put in because this is a dead end, um, easement. And then this is four lots, so three and four, so these two, that, that would apply. So three lots, four lots, it still has to have that thirty-foot wide easement, twenty-foot travelway with an approved turnaround, um, because they're in excess, this easement is in excess of a hundred and fifty feet. This is a figure of all of the approved turnaround options. As you can see, um, at the bottom, those four right there, um, which is a L, a T, a Y, and then the cul-de-sac. And then obviously above that is the minimum all-weather path standards, um, such as compact gravel. You know, that is one of the, the minimum all-weather path standards. Compact gravel, asphalt are both, from my understanding from the Fire Marshal, those are approved as sufficient for all-weather. Okay, so this is the last page of your handout, and this is where the zoning ordinance is, or the zoning ordinance updates would apply. These are the only sections in the zoning ordinance that deal with easements. It's obviously, as you can tell, more of a subdivision ordinance issue. This is essentially just saying that easements serving commercial structures or three or more, um, lots shall be required to have a greater easement width, is what I've obviously went over. And, uh, the subdivision ordinance or current NC fire code. So the minimum lot frontage on a publicly dedicated or publicly maintained road shall be thirty-five feet. Pre-existing non-conforming lot frontage or easement width shall not prevent issuance of a C certificate of zoning compliance as long as NC fire code access requirements are met or the approval of the Fire Marshal is received. So if the Fire Marshal, you know, reviews the lot that is being added and sees that the existing easement is sufficient, then, then that would be fine. But otherwise, it would have to be upgraded. Under that is section four oh-five, four oh-seven point five, excuse me, of, which is the campground section. And as you can tell, there was, there was just a little bit of language in there as far as the travelway in a campground. So, um, that is gonna be changed from sixteen feet, um, width to twenty feet to be consistent. And then below that is for telecommunications towers, which is six fourteen point five. There was a, a, a little bit of language that said a recorded easement for an access road of at least twelve foot wide. We struck through that twelve-foot wide and it now says to meet current NC fire code standards. So the Fire Marshal would have to review that access easement back to that cell tower. And this is the grievances section. Obviously, this whole section has been struck through, um, which previously, it states that a person who, um, would like to appeal the decision of a planning boards, um, yes, to a major subdivision, that can be appealed to you all, which typically in the past, that has never been done or practiced. It's always, if, if that has been done, it's been taken to Superior Court. And also just, um, from state statute, it references that these decisions should also be taken to Superior Court and not the local governor and board. So just to be consistent with what's been done in the past, um, we struck through this section also while we were going through the access easement requirements. And I believe that that is my last slide. So I will be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Questions for Bailey? I have one, Bailey.
Okay.
Go back to the campground section, four oh-seven point five.
Okay.
It talks about, um, striking through sixteen feet.
Yes, sir.
Going back to twenty.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Current campgrounds, if they don't meet this standard.
Yes, sir.
Are they grandfathered in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions?
Was it the grievances? Yes.
We don't have it.
Oh, it's on my screen. It's not on your screen?
No.
Is anything on your screen? Right, so major subdivisions, if it's just a typical major subdivision, it only goes to the planning board anyways. If it's a conditional, then it'll come to you all because it's a rezoning, but if it's just a straight major subdivision, it will go to the planning board for approval of the preliminary plat, and they will give the yes or no. And then the final plat they will bring to the planning department, and as long as nothing's changed, then we can sign off on it. So if someone, a developer, for instance, is aggrieved by the decision of the planning board and the planning board denies their preliminary plan, typically in the past when that has been done, that has been taken to Superior Court. And then there was this section in there that, obviously, had not been applied, which says that instead of taking it to Superior Court, they could take it to you all. But in the past, it's been taken to Superior Court, and state statute referenced that it should be taken to Superior Court when it is appealed. Right, so you wouldn't have ever even had a say in the matter or a decision, because it stops at the planning board, it doesn't even come to you all, so you never even saw it in the first place. And so, sure.
That would be like a subdivision like by right, so with our new rule preservation area, you would have like, like 100 acres and they added into 10-acre lots.
Sure.
They would need it by right, because they're not going, I mean, they're 10 acres, it's above the three-acre threshold, and so they would bring the plat, and for whatever reason, planning board turned it down, and they would go, so that, that'd be a subdivision that would be allowed by right within that certain area of the county.
Right.
Based on its zoning jurisdiction.
Any other questions? Pleasure to board.
Mr. Chairman?
I move this board recommends approval of ZA 24-02. This text amendment is the goal of the 2040 Stanley County Land Use Plan. It will improve safety in the communities by clarifying the easements which must allow access for emergency vehicles. Also, the removal of section 6610 regarding grievances will create consistency with the state statute when it comes to the appealing process of major subdivision approval.
I have a motion, Commissioner Eifert, we have a second. Commissioner King, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I have before you this evening the, an item to award the bids for the off-site improvements for the North Carolina Emergency Management Training Center. This will be primarily the extension of sewer. There's a small water, stubbing water under the road and into the property, but it's a very minimal part of the, of this bid. This is for, to, for the North Carolina Emergency Training Center, this will be paid out of that North Carolina Emergency Training Center fund and the funds that came down from the state and the Department of Insurance. The low bidder for this project was SKC Incorporated, and there's a letter in the packet recommending them as the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions for County Manager Lucas? Where the company, SKC Inc., where?
They're out of Seagrove, they're out of Moore County.
We didn't have any local contractors willing to?
It was a state utility there, Monroe, you know, we just approved state utility for both the Stony Gap and Meadow Creek Church, and then Wayne Brothers. Wayne Brothers is actually the contractor that Barnhill's using for their civil work out there and their, all their, on their, their onsite utilities, and so they also bid.
And so SKC Inc. is the low bidder, correct?
Yeah, they were the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, yes, yes, sir.
Which all the, all the bidders would, whoever's awarded would have to have a bond.
Oh, yeah, they have to be, have to be both a payment bond and a performance bond, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? County Manager Lucas? Don't hear any, so what's the pleasure to board?
I make a motion to approve the amendment.
Commissioner King, do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Hatley? Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. I believe you're still up.
Yes, sir. One last item on your regular agenda this evening is the opioid sentencing funding request. This is from Nazareth Children and Family Services. Nazareth Children and Family Services was awarded, or you all appropriated, approved and appropriated funding for them last May. So their funding will actually run out at the end of May 2024. And so what they're asking for is to bridge that gap between the end of May 2024 and the end of the fiscal year, so essentially one month of funding, so that they, and they've, they have actually submitted a grant application for next fiscal year through our, our grant portal, and will be considered and brought forward at a later date. But they're, they're basically seeking one month's worth of, of funding so that they can continue to provide services through, up until what would be potentially a new grant for them to provide treatment services. And they do also provide MAT, this, this group, so. So this would be, basically be authorizing, unauthorized resolution for one month and allocating $3,000 towards that.
And this is for Stanley County residents, correct?
Yes, absolutely, no, no, these are, even though they're, they're based there, they're providing the services here locally, that's correct.
Any questions? County Manager Lucas? Hearing none, what's the pleasure to board?
I make a motion that we approve the $3,000 to bridge the gap till the new budget year.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Oshuto. Any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, County Manager.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, I believe everybody's had time to review the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Oshuto, do we have a second? Commissioner Hatley, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-0. Okay, we're down to Commissioner comments. And I'm gonna start with Commissioner Oshuto.
Hey, just want to give a shout out to the town of Locust. We have that Lucky Locust Lucky Leprechaun 5K, and we worked with the West Stanley Senior Center. Man, that place was booming, they helped with backup pickup and everything. They even got bingo at 6 o'clock on Friday nights, and you better have all your stuff off the table at 4:10, when those people come in for bingo, because you don't want to take their seat. But anyway, no, that was, we had 200, and I think it was 239 runners, which was up from 121 last year, and the town of Locust, we used their town center for, for stuff, so it was a very nice festive event. And the overwhelming majority of people who came to that event were from outside Stanley County. And Dr. Connie Ekman did a great job organizing that event. For Bill, we used pretty much all local vendors.
Good. That keeps the dollars rotating in Stanley County. Commissioner King?
I just want to thank Mr. Morehead for bringing that to our attention tonight about the flags. I appreciate you taking the time and effort to make a difference in that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Eifert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to thank Bailey and Michelle for working on that subdivision ordinance. That clears up a lot of wheels and shaw, so I appreciate you guys doing that. And Mr. Morehead, I actually served in the Air Force, and I appreciate you doing that. You can ask my wife, right there, something just gripes me, the no end is a flag that's torn.
I agree.
That should be taken down. So thank you so much for doing that, sir.
Commissioner Barbie?
I think they've covered it all, no comment.
Commissioner Hatley? Commissioner Crump?
I too want to thank you, Mr. Morehead, for bringing that to our attention, and I'll definitely make a phone call tomorrow, and we'll see what we can get started with Stanley County schools.
I want to mention something that goes on every month in Stanley County. The last Tuesday of each month, Stanley County Senior Center puts on a breakfast for veterans. And that breakfast continues to grow, generally filling up two rooms with veterans, many of them, there's still some WWII veterans that are there. It touches me every time I see a WWII veteran, because my dad and my father-in-law were both WWII veterans. See a lot of veterans from the Korean War, and see a lot from Vietnam and Afghanistan. We have people that have been willing to lay down their lives because of that flag that Mr. Morehead showed us. We don't like them tattered like you showed, like you showed Dale, but I really appreciate you getting that flag down. And I'm gonna ask County Manager Lucas to contact the superintendent and ask him to appoint someone to go out and look at all the flags that are out there. And I hope you get a positive response. Thank you, Dale, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Don't have anything else, so I need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor? We adjourn.